Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our public work session. Also, I want to welcome my colleagues on council, city staff, interim city manager, invited guests and friends. I would ask that my colleagues please note your presence electronically.
Try to vote now, please. Is it still not working? Okay. Mr. Barnes.
President.
Mr. Hugel.
President.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Mr. Tillich.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker. Mayor Glover.
Here. Madam interim city manager. Ma'am, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth City family. So, we will begin our presentations today. We have two. One starts with the proposed budget for discussions for fiscal year 25, and the next, we will be working with the police, Sergeant Blankenship, on the cameras that we have installed for school zones. So, if it would please counsel, I would like to move to the podium so that we can move on with the presentation. So, to assist me with the proposed budget discussions, which is the city manager's budget, we will start with me, and then I will have Mr. Burke, who is the budget officer, to start on a different section. So, let's start with the proposed budget. So, I would like to start with the budget dates to remember. Because we're in a proposed budget session, I would like for the public to understand the dates that we are bound to in order to make our deadline of May 14. So, public work sessions will be dedicated to budget topics. We will have other items, but the majority or the heavy lift will be addressed during the budget, the public work sessions regarding the budget. Special call public work session, we had a change there. We were going to do February 17, but we are no longer doing that date because we're working with the schools on a different joint meeting. So, that's to come. There will be no public work session and council meeting on March 12. The 14th, go ahead.
Instead of March 12, it will be March 14. It's the new date.
Okay. And all of this has changed since this last. This has only been within the last 24 hours where these changes have come. The manager submits the proposed budget and capital program on March 25. Continue budget discussions until adoption. So, you have from April 9 to April 20, to May 23rd. No, to April 9 to the 23rd. And then, city council adopts the budget on May 14. So, for fiscal year 25, I would like to just go through budget expectations. The expectation is to present a structurally balanced budget. We are using the budget to leverage resources to provide relief to citizens. Increase funding for capital projects, infrastructure expansion. We're providing funding to facilitate new programs that benefit the community. Increase efforts to secure state and federal grant funding. Acquire facilities that bridge the gap to increase the city's footprint. Implement and upgrade reporting programs that will enhance productivity. Increase funding to develop and enhance minority participation programs. Increase funding and personnel services for departments that provide direct services to the community. And we're reducing the public utility subsidy to the general fund. Now, I'm going to turn this part over to Mr. Trey Burke, who is our budget officer, and then I will come back toward rates.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of city council. Local tax. Local taxes paid by homeowners, businesses and consumers make up the large majority of general fund revenues. General fund revenues support nearly every service provided by the city, including public safety, schools, libraries, public works, and also through inter-fund transfers, social services, behavioral health care, and stormwater, just to name a few. The only function in the city not bolstered by general fund revenues is the public utilities. Note that while the city does receive disbursements related to the new casino gaming tax, those tax rates are set, collected, and dispersed by the state, and so they're captured under the intergovernmental revenues portion of the chart. Real property taxes are levied on all property in the city at a rate of $1.30 per $100 of assessed value. For fiscal year 2020-24, the city provided a five cent, provided four or five cent credit, reducing the effective tax rate to $1.25 per $100 of assessed value. As the city considers a plethora of needs, solutions and requests from the community, we will need to strike a balance between those programs and our anticipated revenues. Based on preliminary estimates, we believe pending other developments and decisions, five to eight cents of relief are achievable in fiscal year 2020-25. Keep in mind that the city faces broad uncertainty that may not be resolved in time to adopt the fiscal year 2025 budget, including real property assessments, overall personnel compensation strategies, and identified large debt issuances. As you can see here, assuming the fiscal year 2020-24, property assessments, each penny on the tax rate, so each cent you reduce it by reduces revenues by about $1 million. It'll be a little bit more next year, we anticipate, but this is a pretty good, pretty good rough estimate for now. So, you can see five cents, $1 million, all the way down to eight cents. We can go to the end. We're kind of... The stormwater management utility is responsible for draining the city cleanly. And, excuse me. The stormwater management utility is responsible for draining the rain cleanly so that it reduces the risk of pollutants and runoff. The division complies with state and federal regulations by safely and efficiently getting stormwater to drain into the city's waterways. This is achieved by maintaining and improving the city's drainage and treatment systems. The stormwater management utility currently maintains 88 miles of roadside ditches, 247 miles of street-side curb and gutter, 611 outcharge disfalls, excuse me, out, discharge outfalls, and 15,658 drainage structures. Typically, the stormwater management fund has allocated $7 million a year to projects. Due to inflation and an expanding stormwater management infrastructure, operational expenses have grown more rapidly than revenues. A stormwater management fund balance declines and operating expenses increase. Existing revenue has not been adequate to cover the full cost of making, excuse me, of making improvements in maintaining the existing infrastructure. The last few years, the city has leveraged American Rescue Plan Act funding, but as that money has been fully allocated, then it can no longer continue. As council has directed staff to sustain a robust capital program, staff is seeking direction from council on how to restore funding from the capital program. We identify two alternatives. Stormwater fees are paid in three-month increments along with real property taxes and measured in equivalent residential units. Increasing stormwater fees by $1 will increase overall revenues by $1 million, the amount needed to restore the previous level of capital funding. 75 cents will address the last few years, excuse me, 75 cents will address the last few years of inflation, which has impacted operational expenditures. The overall increase would be $1.75 or 12.7%. Note that the city has long had a policy which increases stormwater, excuse me, equivalent residential use rates by 75 cents a year. So, the increase over traditional increases is $1. Another option council could consider is to make a one-time transfer from the general fund, from general fund balance, to the stormwater management fund. This would enable the city to delay the increases a couple of years, but consider that possible future-year increases will need to be more, could, excuse me. It's also possible future-year increases will need to be more than this, than they would currently. Still, it would benefit consumers who are just now seeing a slow showing of inflation, slowing of inflation. Staff is seeking direction on this decision.
Okay. So, this part of the budget presentation will be city code 16-66. This is more so as what we have as enforcement. Currently, we already have a refuse rate, but unfortunately, we have not been enforcing the refuse rate on certain commercial businesses. So, I thought it would be a great opportunity since we will be dealing with rates during the budget process, to bring this up because I'm sure the public is going to give you all calls once we start enforcing what has already been in code since 2009, so that we understand what waste management business or commercial establishments mean any of these premises wherein. So, a business or any business, professional, occupational subject to the license tax ordinance of the city, the carry-on broadcasting, publishing, manufacturing, commercial activity or process, including the rental of residential property, and there are multifamily units of four or more, including condo units. So, for chapter 16, basically, the rate in assigned to city code for commercial, which establishes a rate for the downtown commercial district, is $40.72. This is not new. This is not something that I'm creating. This is something that has always been in place with the ordinance that was adopted as of July 1, 2009, or July 9, 2009. So, June 9, 2009. So, basically, no, July 1. So, basically, we have an ordinance in place that we have not been enforcing the right rate. And based on the ordinance for garbage and refuse, downtown should have a rate of $40.72 for the downtown district because they have more than one pickup. I believe they get picked up five days a week, and it's multiplied by the number of pickups per week. Currently, we're only, have only been charging commercial $29.17, which is the residential rate. This came up because, again, I've been spending a lot of time in waste management identifying things that we have not been enforcing. And because of that, I was able, I've been looking at codes and rate changes, and this came up. So, I just wanted to inform everybody that this is not new. However, it will be become enforced. And so, we have 900 commercial accounts in the city. Not 900 in the downtown area, but 900 commercial accounts. And we're identifying those commercial accounts who have refuge cans but have not been paying their fair share, which causes the city to have to now lean on taxpayers to receive funding and cover the cost of those not paying their fair share. So, we're going to fix that. And so, questions and answers. I'm sure you have many, but I wanted to get through that presentation and so we can answer your questions individually. So, open for discussion.
I just want to inform my colleagues on council. The buttons are not working. So, if you could please raise your hand. And Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
About the, oh, sorry. About the codes that we aren't enforcing in waste management, have we started to, started to enforce them or will we start to enforce them after this meeting since you informed us now? Or are you waiting for the budget?
No. Great question. What we're doing is our due diligence and research in which, what businesses have them, and which has caused me to go through a whole process change. Because currently, if you call, whether you're a resident or a commercial business, and you want your water cut on, that's the immediate I'd flag to say, an alert to say, "Give me a trash can." Currently, you have to not only call the water department, but you have to call the trash, waste management to say, "I need a can." And so, they are the ones that are putting the cans and then sending them out. Right now, it should be a one-stop shop. What we're looking for is efficiency and effectiveness. So, what we're doing is now that we've identified it, identified the code, informed the public, we are going through to look at each account, identify which accounts have which cans, how many cans, and what district they actually are in. And so, we're updating, and I'm sure we'll do a letter, but this is just part of the process. We're moving the need to call waste management back to utilities because when you call, you can do it all. It's all one bill. And so, then a report goes to waste management to say, "This commercial business, this residency just had water service and needs a trash can." It allows us to kind of keep track and control of what's going on. And it's been in two different places that really don't talk to each other. So, it's now bringing it home and then informing the other department that you need to send a trash can out, and how many in the cycle. And it's all in the same screen, but it just wasn't a process that was being followed. So, now...
Okay. So, my second question, on page 11, as far as the price, you said $40 a month. Is that, is that standard of what people do? Or is that, that seems cheap? I don't know.
So... When you get your bill, right now, your bill is $29.17. You know, we went monthly. So, the monthly cycle has basically shaken the tree to see everything that's out there. Because people who aren't paying their bill, people who weren't paying their bill, we're at a, we've caught up. We're actually cutting off, shutting off services that for people who don't pay, with the exception of, and I won't say that out loud, you all know. But we've had people who've taken advantage of this city way too long. And so, what we're doing, your fair share. $29.17 is the rate for regular refuse, for your trash can. If you have another trash can or two, you pay another fee for that one as well, for an additional can. But the standard rate is $29. It's 12 cents or 17 cents? I just can't remember which one.
So, what I mean by standard, I mean not enforcement of like across the 757, for a commercial?
Commercial, well, let's talk. Thank you for that. Normal around surrounding cities. Remember, we had this conversation during one of our council meetings before, and we looked at all the rates, and the citizen, the council decided what rates would increase, what rates would stay the same. And we removed some rates when it came to water. $5 here, $10 there. We didn't see a reason to, and $179 deposit, we removed that. So, we've been working with water and waste management for a while. So, as far as this, commercial businesses in the city should not even have a refuse can because of the things that they collect. You're talking about grease. You're talking about oil, depending on what type of business you have. Paint, those things, we really should not even be servicing those industries. They should have the big brown or green trash cans from a third party or another source, not city. I think it's GFI or something like that. We were making this exception for commercial when we should not have ever dealt with that. So, to answer your questions, localities surrounding commercial businesses don't have small 65-gallon cans. They get the big commercial cans, and they actually outsource that to a different vendor. But we have taken that on.
So, if we are taking that on, shouldn't we see what those vendors are charging them and charge them somewhere around the same thing since we already not supposed to be providing the service?
That's up to council. My, my purpose of bringing this to you, to council now, is so that the people who are currently receiving this service are paying their fair share because currently, they are not. So, it's to get the basics done. And if council will, wants to direct me to see what the other localities are charging and for us to not even provide that service, we can go down that road. But today, it was just to inform because you all will get the calls. You all are going to get the calls, and you're, they're going to say, "Why did my bill go up?" And those are going to be reflected of the commercial accounts. And so, if it's the desire of council for me to look further and do a little additional research to determine if we're going to even increase this rate or what direction you would have me to go. But what is already here, I would like to just enforce. And then, if it's your desire for me to go and dig a little further before this budget, while we're in the proposed budget season, that's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor then. Councilman Moody, then Councilman Tillich.
Yes, Ms. Terry, this is following up more on this waste management issue. I thought in a previous meeting when we discussed this that there was some conversation surrounding that commercial was not supposed to be having refuse pickup. Was that based on an ordinance?
Yes. That's, so, based on an ordinance, but remember, this ordinance gives the exception for downtown.
Right. That's, that's what I'm trying to get clarity on. The, the ordinance does not permit for commercial in general to have refuse pickup, but for this exception for downtown.
Right.
Okay. So, therefore, we're not, we're not talking about then all of the commercial businesses starting to receive this $40.72? Because, I'm trying to make sure I'm clear. If, if the ordinance is saying that commercial is not supposed to have pickup service, then why is it that downtown was getting pickup service? And then, and then, why is it that we're even considering it if the ordinance already says it's not to be?
Right. Because this ordinance identifies in 16-64 rates for dwelling units per dwelling unit per month. So, you still have some apartments that are based on this ordinance, but specifically here, that's, it's in the ordinance. So, we follow that you have your multi-unit apartments and anything based on the criteria of what is considered a business or a commercial establishment.
Well, well, I'm, when you said apartments, I'm, that's, I'm thinking that's more of a residential setting. When you're saying commercial, are you, are you speaking strictly of a business that is selling a good or service?
Based on the ordinance and the language in it. So, so, let me make, let me back up. I took this straight out of city code, 16-66B. This is city code. And these are the things that list business or commercial establishments in the city. And so, the fee based on those identified under this guideline relates to $40.72, which is 16-64. But in addition to that, 16-66B gives the exception of downtown. Downtown gets the same fee. However, they have more, more pickups. Regular is regular, one time a week. Downtown, based on the ordinance, based on code, has multiple pickups. If my last understanding is five days a week, where the average is one. So, that's where this language comes from.
Right. So, and I, and I see what you're saying here in the ordinance, but what I'm not clear on is that in our previous discussion, I thought it was said that commercial was not supposed to be having pickup at all of refuse. That's why they get the third-party contracts to do that. And I thought you were indicating to us the exception has been for downtown, that downtown was receiving refuse pickup, but I, from what you're saying, they weren't being charged properly.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I think I understand where the disconnect. So, in our previous conversation, the attention was on, based on ordinance downtown. But don't forget, they, based on code, you still have exceptions what they consider commercial. So, what you might be thinking as commercial may just be a restaurant or something like that. Based on code, here, they still get charged a rate of $40.72. They should be, but they're not. Should be charged a rate of $40.72 for those particular things per month that fall under this code. Downtown, the exception is multiple pickups only for the downtown area at a rate that per trash can. They, that is code. That is what they're supposed to be charged. I think that the whole purpose and the premise of this for the commercial rates for downtown is they get multiple pickups. They're identified as a district, downtown district, where other around the city that fall under 16-64 have a one-rate refuse fee, just like a residential. There's a one-rate refuse fee. $29, and it's either 12 or 17. That's identified.
Yeah. I'd be interested, and I think council should see because you said commercials should not have a refuse can. So, if that's based on an ordinance, then we, we should see that ordinance. And therefore, if, if that's the case, then the issue isn't whether we should or should not pick it up. It's already in the ordinance that we shouldn't be picking it up.
And here's the contradiction of that ordinance. This is the code. This comes from city code. Those things are identified as business or commercial. So, you're saying commercial, but still, you're talking about business or commercial. So, they've given exceptions to those rules in the same code for 16.64.
Well, wouldn't that be the business's decision whether to have the city versus private to pick up whichever is more cost-efficient?
It would be, because we don't offer those larger cans. So you've seen the big brown pickups. We're talking about the little 65 gallon. There are businesses who still request those cans and receive them. So commerce, the big commercial ones, they're not even an option because we don't give those. But it goes back to the 65 gallon. And again, all of this is in city code. Even here, if you look at additional pickups, it's an additional $10. Disposal of small dead animals, $30. There are other fees associated with this code that we really get my my desire is to go through city code. That's a lot of things that we're going to do during this budget. Because at one point, we all talked about there are some things in the codes that need to be changed. And just like we looked at inspections, just like we looked at permits, they all need to be reviewed because some of these things don't even make sense as it relates to where we are in the environment in which we're in now. And so those things, it's not a overnight, it's not a one-budget cycle. But the things that need that where people need to pay their fair share, here we are. And so I'm identifying those and bringing those to council because again, you all will get the calls. But we need some cleanup and but we need to enforce what we already have, just like Dr. Whitaker.
So the bottom line to my so so commercial should not be receiving refuse pickup according to the ordinance?
According to the ordinance,
Okay.
Business or commercial establishments, based on this, there are they're giving it an exception. Because there is again, so let me let me $250, we talked about $250 when some a business comes to your house, cuts your trees down, and they leave it in front of your home. They charge you, but they don't take it away. So you call the city and you say, I got these trees in front of my house. I had a contractor, but they didn't take it. Can you come and get it? So the first question, before you even realize you answered it, is I hired a third party to do this. I paid them, but they didn't take it. What am I to do? So we have a code where it says if we have to come out based on tonnage, we charge you $250 per loader per ton. And so one of the things you mentioned about let's do away with is I'm putting an undue burden on the taxpayer. It's not my your fault that they didn't take it. But now the city has to now use its resources to take away something that you already paid for. So that's a situation in itself. Because you'll see as you ride down, you'll see these big tree stumps in somebody's yard. And I know you asked the same question I asked, why is that there? Who was supposed to take it? What contractor left that there? And probably took the money from the customer and didn't pay. So then you call the city and the city says, well, it's going to cost you. So then there's an ongoing battle with waste management, me, you all get the call. They didn't come pick my stuff up. But they also mentioned that a contractor cut it down. So we're in a position where, of course, we're going to do what's best because we don't want that there. But now we're going after the contractor where that was really not enforced before. Because if the contractor paid, then the contractor needs to finish their service or they need to pay the city to come and get it.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm a little confused. Are we talking about municipal solid waste? Are we talking about refuse waste?
Solid waste, refuse waste, anything associated with waste management and us pick up. Because some things we can't pick up.
Well, there there should be a difference. Normally, bulk waste is not picked up as often as municipal solid waste. And those cans that you're talking about, that most restaurants and and a lot of businesses have, they're eight-yard containers as a rule. And and the other smaller containers are 90-gallon containers. Now, are are we looking to eliminate the 90-gallon commercial 90-gallon commercial containers that are being picked up five days a week? Are we looking to transitioning those to the eight-yard or six? They come in six-yard too, even four-yard. Or are we looking to require them to transition away from that five-day pickup?
Okay, so you had a two-part question. We only had the discussion of bulk because we we went down a different road. I'm talking about refuse. I'm talking about the black trash cans, trash. I'm talking about businesses pick up trash. So if you ride down High Street or in the back of High Street, you're going to see a lot of our city black trash cans. Our city trash cans, the City of Portsmouth, if they're a third party, they have Hampton Rose Waste or GFI or something like that on the trash cans. So I'm talking about our city trash cans, the big black ones that you have at your house. Because those are our trash cans. 90-gallon, okay, so forgive me if I misquoted the gallon size. But that is what I'm referring to.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm not even speaking of bulk because we don't deal with that at all. We're just talking about refuse, black 90-gallon trash cans.
Municipal, we're talking about municipal solid waste.
Solid waste, what you take to the dump, well, not the dump, but the trash place, Sipso.
Well, right on Court Street, I won't mention the name of the business. I'd say one business has probably at least eight, maybe 10 of those 90-gallon containers that are right on the side of the business that are visible from motorists. And I take it that they have those because there's no room to place an eight-yard or a six-yard container. So so if we, what I'm saying, that I think we need to do some some research into the impact on on some of the businesses. And I agree wholeheartedly that commercial or the residential should not be funding the commercial because of commercial receiving more service and and not utilizing a third party. So how many how many of those situations do we have? I think, first of all, we need to find out the number. And if we found out the number, we should have a record of the frequency. And from that point, we should be able to put a number to it on what it's costing. So we we only have a small bit of information. I mean, I agree with what you're what you're looking at. But right now, we we don't have the whole picture due to not having all the information.
So if, thank you for that. I am, this is a due diligence process. But regardless, they are, they have trash cans. They are being billed. They have a frequency of five days a week. That's consistent, that's the truth. There's no, but what I am doing is I'm look, what we're doing is taking a full count. Because, for instance, there were several that we took as samples just to identify and make sure that we are looking at the same information. And so we had one business, we had five businesses, just like say, a sample size of five. And so we went to those particular establishments to see how and to count the trash cans. Because one said I only had one documented, one said I only have none, and another one said I had three. So we went to that establishment to count cans. The one who said one, they had three. The one they had said zero, they had five. The one that said they had two had one. So there is a process that we're going through to identify how many cans. Because again, we're in a system, they've been billed. I had one and I looked at and tracked it from when they had how many trash cans they had and what we charged them. When I look at how long that establishment has had trash cans that were not being the right count and the right dollar amount, we have lost $106,000 from that business establishment alone. So again, I'm more so trying to ensure that people are paying what they are getting a service for. And to your point, Councilman Moody, we're not going to do anything and start anything that is not already in place. We're going to see what you have, identify what your fee is and what you should be charged before we start doing. This is a one-by-one, a street-by-street. You're already identified as a commercial business in the system. We're just verifying what you have to ensure you're being charged correctly.
And another point, third parties do furnish the 90-gallon containers too. So that that doesn't have to be a city operation?
Correct, and you we absolutely know that from the pictures we received during one time where the person continued to take pictures and send them. And right on side of the trash can, it was a duplex. Those were not our cans. They were properly identified as not city. However, they didn't take the time to look to see what was the writing to determine it was not our property.
So we'll have a we'll have more facts during at some point during the budget season?
Absolutely. And this is more so to bring these things to your awareness. But because again, realistically, you all will receive the calls. And it's just a matter of the information being out. And one thing, you can direct them to this meeting. You can direct them to this conversation. You have information to understand why. You can identify and direct them to city code. You know, there we're contacting, we're establishing this contact with businesses so they are understanding. How many do you have? This is how many? Your fee is going to increase based on what the code says you should be charged. So it's not going to come as any surprise, or it shouldn't. But I I think this is the best way to kind of get ahead of it and inform you all what we're doing so that it can, when you receive those calls, you can address it.
Thanks.
Councilman Tillage, and then Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments were very similar to Councilman Moody's comments. I just, I appreciate the due diligence of this. Is that better?
Yes.
My comments were very similar to Councilman Moody's comments. I appreciate the due diligence, especially when it comes to commercial properties not paying their proper respected their fee. I just, I would like just to have more information as you do your research so we can make the decision. Because I hear we're throwing away, I think, I think, like, the 90-gallon, then I was saying 65-gallon. But then on the ordinance, it says 105-gallon. So I just, you know, I think once we get more facts and things, I think we can make better, better, better judgments.
Yeah, well, this one is, this is already done. It's, you know, we moved to the black trash, a black trash can for us is a black trash can you get that it says City of Portsmouth. So at one point, we may have had little trash cans. At one point, we had bigger. But right now, they're 90-gallon. Okay, so those are things that can be updated in the ordinance. However, it specifically identifies the rate. I wasn't trying to increase the rate. I wasn't trying to reduce the rate. I was just trying to enforce the rate, if that's fair.
And I have a part to that question too. For the $40.72 fee, is that for anybody that has trash cans? Or is that solely for commercial?
Solely for business and commercial.
Okay, and then the $40.72 multiplied by every week would be people, businesses that get picked up every single day?
That are downtown commercial district.
And they get picked up every day?
Every day, five days a week.
Okay, I just want to know the difference between that, thank you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just going through the presentation first, page four, the budget components. I guess let's try Burke. I heard you mention about the casino revenues. But are we going to get a breakdown or at least a total of the revenues that we receive for 2023 and how we may look to disburse them for whatever use that we determine?
For 2023, those for 2023, those revenues were already would have already either been dispersed or fallen to fund balance. For 2024, we can go through, but really, you know, without having any kind of dedicated revenue. So if you say, hey, it's going to go to this, 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 you know, it's going to go to the overall expenditure and revenue picture so it could go towards, you know, defraying other taxes, which is part of what we've done with the 5% decrease. So, you know, we're happy to provide a summary of the revenue, but you know, we need counsel direction.
Yeah, I think you should.
So bottom line is, yes, you will see what we have because that's part of our breakdown that we do annually with all our revenue. So what we're doing now, the whole premise of this is we have dedicated any money, just like the $5 million, is based on a surplus that we have that failed to fund balance. We're waiting for our final numbers to come in for 2023. As you know, we're waiting for one of our component units to finish so that we can provide that final to you all, the state and the federal government for our reporting purposes. But again, when and I'm showing you these things that we wanted to give relief. And that's based on some of the surplus that we tend or we are expecting to see or have seen from '23 to '24 that will help fund these things. Because again, you all have some things that you want us to do. We have some things that we're going to reduce, but we're going to use those dollars to relieve our citizens, to give our citizens relief. And so we're putting those dollars back into the community. And you'll see that as we go because the $5 million is from that surplus. The $5 million, you know, we have CIP coming up. And you're going to see what we're going to use some of that revenue to fund on that respect.
Okay, all right. So I guess that tied into my next question with the either-or, the transfer of the $5 million or reducing, increasing by one, page nine, to restore the stormwater capital program. So that's what you're talking about, the $5 million?
Yes, what has happened every year, and Trey really spoke to it. You know, in in the ordinance, we have that utilities will go up, what percent?
75 cents.
75 cents. So we're looking for the money that we receive in a surplus that would drop to fund balance to fund some of these things. We want to be able to give our citizens a relief. It's no need to go and increase your storm water rates on your tax bill when we're trying to reduce or give you or reduce the tax rate by five cents. I mean, eight cents. So it's like getting a raise, but then your health insurance goes up. You get a 3% raise and your health insurance goes up 4%. What's the point? You want to give the citizens a relief. And that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay, and then last questions are related to page 10, same questions with the waste management. Is there an anticipated revenue that we expect to gain from the enforced code and getting the the due revenues that we were owed for? And I know you mentioned 106,000 for one business. Right, so do we know what these anticipated revenues are going to be and how it's going to help us with our waste management program?
Absolutely. So once we go through our due diligence and identify the businesses that reflect the increase, you won't see it immediately, but by the fiscal year end, you'll see the difference, you know? And we're really pushing. We need, we've been able to buy new trucks this year. You've seen the big white trucks that look like clouts. Those things, if we don't start putting money back into the city and invest in, then we're going to be in trouble. And we're going to always be the burden on the taxpayers. Our tax revenue, we don't have a plethora of resources that we pull from. We're really on the backs of taxpayers. 42% of our revenue comes from taxpayers when it comes to personal, no, real estate tax. So we want to make sure that where we can't give relief, we will give relief. But if we can capture the revenue that is there, we just haven't been charging properly, that allows us to do that. That allows us to bring up personnel services. That allows us to increase our complement. That allows us to do different things within beautification. That 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 gives us the the opportunity to do what we have to do with the city without increasing taxes every year for something else. We can provide this relief.
Okay, and then my last question, I guess, is do we have a plan to effectively notify the business and commercial communities of this this change?
Yeah, what we're doing, we're we're going by first. We're going and talking to them. We're going by, we're counting cans. They will receive a notification to say, hey, we've identified this. This is the code. This is not a new rate. This is the code. It's been in effect since 2009. But we have not been properly charging you the correct fees.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hugle, you have the floor, sir, and then Councilman Moody.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the proposed real estate rate changes, you say here, we should be able to provide five to eight cents of relief. Based on what you know now, what's your recommendation going to be?
It's still going to be a credit because of the unforeseen things you have, we have coming, and uncertainty. But my recommendation, and the little blue says eight cents.
Okay, and then for stormwater, you gave us two options, increase the rate or transfer $5 million. What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is the $5 million transfer to give, ensure that you can give the relief for the citizens. You don't have to increase the rate this year.
Okay, and then on on waste management, so you kind of spoke to this. So so you're going to collect more revenue. My understanding is the revenue that we've been collecting to this point is covering the cost.
Barely, because we have to do a transfer.
Right, barely, but still, they're in balance. So if you increase the revenue by collecting more from business, it's good because that means somebody that hasn't been paying their fair share is going to pay their fair share. But we're going to have more revenue than we have cost. What's the plan to do with that money? Are you going to invest it in more trash trucks? Or could we give a rate reduction to residential to to take advantage of that that extra revenue?
So, no. So let me tell you why.
Okay.
The issue is, remember, when this was brought up as part of the recommendation from the financial advisors, we're so far behind that this is only going to allow us to do some catch-up where I don't have to hit the citizens every year for that increase. We're still behind, but this puts money in the fund to give them some relief so I don't have to try to build it up over time that fast. So with the $5 million as the supplement to really go there, with the collection of the people who need to pay their fair share, we should start seeing it balance. Not so much as gaining revenue because we're already in the hole. We should have been at $15, I don't know, $15.50. We're not there. So I think council made a decision that every year, the utility rate would increase and stormwater rate would increase. This is just going to hold us off and allow a delay for increase over the years so we can start building that fund up with hope that everybody pays their fair share and that we get ahead of this. We won't have to do this.
Okay, so bottom line, no rate increases for waste management or stormwater. And we're going to have enough money to to do the investing that we need to do instead of raising the rates to create that money.
When? But that's.
Let me ask a yes or no question. Yes or no, do we need to raise the waste management rate in this upcoming budget?
So Trey is telling me something here.
Okay, so we're not talking about raising the waste management.
Not the waste management.
Okay, and we're not going to raise storm, stormwater?
So the stormwater's been on a program of 75 cents a year for years, and the dollar is the difference. The dollar is the shortfall. So it would still be a 75 cent increase as we cent increase as we've been doing for the past five.
Even with the five million dollar surplus transfer?
Correct, because you're still in the hole.
Okay.
And the, the operational costs are still going up. So this is just to kind of, this is basically for the capital program, not for the operations.
So seventy-five cents instead of a dollar seventy-five, the five million is covering on the dollar?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement rather than ask a question. This is on behalf of my colleagues. So when we were in Richmond at the Virginia Municipal League meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was pointed out that the governor's budget revealed in December included a authority to abolish the car tax and to offer to the communities an offset by increasing sales tax in the community to, to generate the revenue that the car tax currently creates. Okay, that's interesting, but I don't know what that means, and I'm not sure anybody in Portsmouth knows what that means. And so if it's, if, if my colleagues agree, I'd like the manager to work with the commissioner of revenue to figure out how much car tax revenue have we been collecting and what sales tax increase we would have to impose to offset that. And, and we're gonna need to do this, in my opinion, pretty quickly because we may need to get to our legislators in the general assembly and tell them, hey, this is a bad deal for Portsmouth. We can't afford to do that. And so we need you to say no to that piece of, of the governor's budget. We, we may need to keep a car tax as, as the way to generate that revenue because the sales tax that we would have to impose might be a, a further downer for business in Portsmouth. And so if you all agree, I'd like to ask the manager to work with the commercial, the commissioner of revenue and figure out car tax versus sales tax. What does that mean in Portsmouth?
And so you know, every year, the commissioner comes and gives his prediction of where we're gonna be and where we're gonna be. So that's coming soon. So he can probably do that all at once and probably provide so we can make a better determination. But there are other things that we're, there are a couple of other things that are in that legislation, you know, grocery store tax. But the way I see it, it all goes back on the backs of the taxpayers. But we can better make a determination once we review that legislation.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody and then Dr. Whitaker.
While, while we are discussing revenue, each day, hundreds of trucks roll through our city. Many of them are overweight. I speak about this every budget cycle. Some of our sister cities have programs where they weigh the trucks and impose fines. At one time, our sheriff's department was, was doing that. Then it was transitioned to the police department. I'd like to know how much revenue that, that we've actually collected in fines. I suspect it's very little. But they're damaging our roads, overweight trucks, our bridges. So I know that Chesapeake realizes millions of dollars each year on overweight truck fines. And as you travel around the city, you can look at a truck's tires and about tell whether it's overweight or not. But, and I, I notice them, I see a lot that I suspect are overweight. But I bet if we had a, a weight unit that was activated again, we would realize a lot of revenue that could be plowed back in to offset some of the damage that's being done to our streets. And some of these trucks find their ways into residential neighborhoods, and they do even more damage because those roads aren't built for that type of traffic. But if you could give us some feedback on the dollar value of the revenue that we've collected?
Okay.
Would be good. And who, who, is that being done now?
We can find out.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, on the issue that Councilman Hugel brought up regarding the personal property tax and the governor's budget, I thought, I thought that the Democratic, Democrats already indicated that that's dead on arrival. I thought that was the comment that came out of the general assembly, that that's not something that's gonna happen. So...
I haven't, I remember seeing his budget. I don't know what happened to it because we've got a couple of things going on for that, but we can research and bring back a report back on that.
Yeah. And the, the rate, the forty-seventy-two that the commercial businesses will start, that will be enforced, is that included in your budget as revenue that is to be expected?
For twenty-five, we just, so we base it on fees. So I guess the answer to your question is probably no, because we haven't enforced it. But once we start enforcing, our projections could reflect what it should, what we should be receiving for twenty-five.
Well, yeah, well, I'm glad it's not included because, do you know if these rates, the forty dollars and seventy-two cents is competitive with the private rates?
Well, that's what Councilman Barnes asked us to go back and review to see what they're actually charging. Because again, this is what's already there. If we wanna look at, and that was based on the desire of council, for me to go back and look at what the commercial and private companies are charging, and are we compatible in comparison to what we should be maybe an increase to satisfy that?
Right, because once you, once you receive one of those black cans, you're gonna at least get charged forty-seventy-two per week for one can, regardless whether you put it out on the street or not.
If you're down, no, on downtown, it's based on how many pickups. So you have some people who have the black cans. You have a maximum of five days we can pick it up. They go down there five days. You may not put it out but three days. We charge you as the recurrence of how often you get it picked up, but you have a five-day window downtown. You have some companies or businesses that get their trash can picked up five times a week downtown in that district. You have some that only put it out three times. We count how many times we come and pick your trash can up downtown. You just know we come five days a week in that cycle because that's what they do for downtown.
Right, but I'm saying, if you at least, you know you're gonna at least be charged one day.
Oh, yeah, okay, I understand, yes.
Right, so that forty-seventy-two has to be competitive with...
Correct, I understand.
Okay. And then the last question, this tax credit that we've been giving the citizens for what the last, this'll be the second year of it. Are the citizens aware that this is just a relief, that it's going back up to where it was?
Well, thank you, good question. On your tax bill, it says relief. It still shows the one dollar and thirty cents, and then it shows a relief on your tax bill as a reduction. The reason we have not committed to that is because we have some things, as City Attorney is gonna share with you all, unforeseen. So we don't wanna commit to that right away, not knowing that we could potentially be, try to cover lost revenue in the future. So to your question, it says relief on the bill, the dollar thirty is there. It shows us a credit. If they're looking at their bill, they understand that. We have it in our budget document. You've all communicated that. We've talked about why it's a credit and not a committed amount. And this allows us the opportunity to kind of fluctuate as we see what additional revenues we could get in, because you may wanna commit to a dollar twenty, because we have other resources coming. But right now, we're just not there. So this is the relief that we can adjust until we get to the point where we can commit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moody, then, of course, Councilman Barnes.
It may have been mentioned in, in the presentation, but what, what's the value of a penny?
Oh, million dollars.
Still a million?
It's probably a little bit higher, but while the map is easy, let's write.
Councilman Barnes, okay. Councilman Tillis, did you want the floor?
Yeah. Yeah, where it says eight cents, we'll reduce revenue by eight million, a million. So we just hit it by per penny to kind of make it simplistic.
Sure.
And that slide, that slide doesn't show up in our presentation. We have to see it on the box.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
It's not, it's not showing up.
She said it's not in the presentation. Oh, that's why.
It's got the page with the pennies on it, but it doesn't show up.
Yeah.
Okay, understood. Ah, sorry. That's that backdrop. Yeah, I got it.
Are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none. Ma'am, would you please proceed with your next item?
Yes, sir. The next item is by Sergeant Blankenship. What we've done is, the chief is at a conference, so Sergeant Blankenship will be here to present. We've gotten a lot of calls, and you've all received a lot of calls on the speed zone cameras. And so we wanted to bring an update so that you all and the public is aware of what we're doing and what's going on.
Thank you, sir. Here's your thing.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Sergeant Blankenship.
All right, the update of speed zone cameras. I think we've been through some of this already, but it may bear repeating. Citations will only be issued when a...
Excuse me, Sergeant, could you please move the mic up a little bit? Thank you, sir.
Citations will only be issued when a vehicle travels within a school zone at least ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit. The cameras actively enforce the speed limit on school days when classes are in session. Enforcement begins thirty minutes before the start of school and thirty minutes after dismissal. All speed limits are marked with signs. Flashing lights near a school are an indicator of the reduced speed limit. Photo speed enforcement signage will be present in school zones with cameras. I know there have been repeated questions about the flashing lights. If they are not flashing, you're not gonna receive a citation. So there's no reason to be concerned with that. First citation is one hundred dollars. Each additional citation is one hundred dollars. These are some examples of signage. The school zone speed photo enforced are new. The times on the school speed limit signs, we are adding those to all locations that do not currently have them, even though they are not actually required by code. And these are maps of our current locations and proposed locations for additional photo enforcement signs. I know there have been some concerns about the possibility of turning into school zones and perhaps not knowing that it's a school zone. So we're adding these photo enforcement signs on some of these areas to go ahead and try to improve that. Again, it's not strictly required, but we wanna give people every opportunity to not receive a citation and to comply with the law. And these are maps for every location. I won't read everything to everyone. But we are adding those photo enforcement signs. And again, we are adding the times on locations that do not have the times. And this is on Ultimate's dime. So I'm utilizing Ultimate to purchase the signs for us, to augment signage that we already have available within the city. And the latest batch of signs should be ready in about two weeks. This is the school zone enforcement schedule. This is also gonna be posted online. We're revamping our webpage to provide a bit more information. There's a FAQ up there already, and we're also going to, as I'm gonna be talking about red light and about school bus stop arm, all that's gonna end up being on the city website as well. And into automated red light cameras. How do red light cameras work? The automated red light cameras measure the location and movement of a vehicle when a stoplight changes from yellow to red. A video and a series of photographs are recorded to document vehicles traveling through the active red light. The date, time, and location of the violation, as well as the license plate of the violator's vehicle are recorded following proper identification of the registered owner of the vehicle. Using the license plate number, the registered owner is mailed a citation, which includes the violation of photos. This is not covered on this slide, but the cameras have a margin of error, so that's about three miles an hour. So we make sure that we're not sending a citation out within that margin for error. So you need to be going faster than that, through that light. You need to really be rolling. A brisk walk is about five miles an hour, so you'll be nearing a brisk walk before you receive a citation. The traffic signal enforcement program is authorized by Section 152968.1 of the Code of Virginia and would operate similarly to the camera speed monitoring enforcement program. The program would be administered by Ultimate. I say would be, it is going to be, and overseen by the Portsmouth Police Department. Under the program, the operator of a vehicle who violates traffic laws by entering an intersection when a light is red would be subject to a fifty-dollar fine. By law, the violation would not be made part of the operator's driving record used for insurance purposes. This is consistent through all of these systems. They, you're not gonna, it's not gonna impact your insurance, it's not gonna impact your license. No citation for a violation will be issued unless the video evidence has been first reviewed and certified by a member of the Portsmouth Police Department. Again, this is for all these, all three of these systems. It requires an officer to review each individual action and before a citation is sent out. Under Virginia law, the red light cameras can be installed at no more than nine intersections. Conspicuous signs must be installed at all intersections at which the cameras are in use. And that is limited to nine because of our population. School bus stop arm cameras. The automated school bus stop arm cameras measure the location and movement of a vehicle when the school bus stops and the stop arm is extended. A vehicle and a series of photographs are recorded to document vehicles traveling through the extended stop arm. The date, time, and location of the violation, as well as the license plate of the violator's vehicle are recorded. Following the proper identification of the registered owner of the vehicle using the license plate number, the registered owner is mailed a citation, which includes the violation photos. And I don't know if this will play, but we have a neat video. I have no idea how to make it play with this. Is it possible? It looks, it looks like it's trying to do something. All right, might not work. Just trust me, there is a video. Are we trying to? I saw the play button. There we go. Okay, so that's a clear violation. That's, that's two fifty right there. Now, violators tend not to reoffend with this particular offense, which is, that's great news. All right, the citations are issued when a vehicle passes a bus with the stop arm out. There is a two hundred and fifty dollars civil penalty against no points, no insurance impacts, and the vehicle monitoring systems must produce a recorded image of the violating vehicle license plate, warning device, activation status, date, time, location, penalties connected payable to the jurisdiction. Again, the same with all these systems. And like I said before, there's a very low reoffender rate. Less than one percent of violations get a second stop arm violation. I don't know, we're at the end.
Thank you, Sergeant Blankenship. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor, then. Councilman Hugel.
Since going active, I think on the first of January, do we know how many citations have been issued?
Yes. Do you want the warnings or just the citations?
Citations.
Okay. Mailed citations are at two... Mailed citations are at two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two.
Twenty-seven hundred...
Two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two mailed citations.
Okay, that's, that, that's since the first of January.
Since, yeah, since we went active, this is not including warnings. Now, uh, there was a higher number of warnings during December. So, uh, in my estimation, we've, and that's six thousand two hundred and eight. So we've, we've reduced the incidence of violators already.
Right.
Significantly.
Thanks.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for the presentation. On, on your first slide, the second bullet says that enforcement starts thirty minutes before the start of school until thirty minutes after dismissal. Isn't it really true that there are two thirty-minute windows, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, when the yellow lights are flashing? That's when we're enforcing, and that window in between during school is not being enforced?
Right, it, it's just at the, that thirty-minute window at the beginning, thirty minutes at the end. Uh, I believe the code does allow for you to have a shorter period of time, but again, if it's not flashing, we're not enforcing.
Yeah, so that's the times that are listed on, uh, Slide thirteen. So I've only really heard complaints about enforcement zone number one, which is London Boulevard. And, and the complaints have been folks entering the school zone from, from side street neighborhoods. So you've got a couple of signs that you're intending to put along, uh, I guess Peninsula and, and maybe one other spot. It looks to me like those signs, though, just say, uh, you're entering a area where we're monitoring with speed cameras.
Correct.
Will the signs also have the, the timeframe for when the enforcement is active as a reminder? 'Cause, 'cause there aren't any yellow lights coming from that direction, and they're already inside the zone where the yellow lights are flashing. So if we could add times underneath those signs that say, "The school zone timeframe is six fifty-five to seven twenty-five" and whatever the afternoon time is, at least there's a, you, you kinda remove all the excuses. We've told you what time you gotta slow down, so slow down. I, I, I got it, but, but, uh, um, th- this one's kinda unique, because London Boulevard in that area is forty mile an hour speed limit. And so if, e- even if they're doing forty miles an hour, if it's during this, uh, time period when the yellow lights are flashing, and they don't see the yellow lights, 'cause the, they're entering inside the, you know, inside where the yellow lights are flashing, the complaint is, "I'm just doing forty miles an hour, which is the normal speed limit, and I didn't realize that the yellow lights were flashing, 'cause, 'cause I don't see 'em. I enter from the side where, and the yellow lights are at the ends." So if we put a reminder up there, at least with the times, timeframes, and I know we've got some signs along London Boulevard that show the, the, the timeframes when the school zone's active. Uh, I guess I'm asking if we could add those times, timeframes to the, uh, to these two locations.
I certainly don't see any issue with doing that. Uh, I will try to again, again, get Ultimate to foot the bill for that.
Okay. Uh, and then, uh, for the red light cameras and the bus stop arm cameras, when will we implement those?
So the red light cameras were initially, I think, slated for maybe around July. But I've been working with engineering, and we may have a bit of a shortcut to go ahead and get power. Power is the big issue dealing with Dominion. And if we can get power, uh, I've been told that construction of these cameras can be done in a month. So fairly quickly, uh, on the red light cameras. On the school bus stop arm, uh, parts were being ordered, and I think we're at, let me double check. Estimated completion is now April.
Okay. And are we gonna go through a warning period with both of these things, or are we just gonna implement?
It's, no, it's thirty-day warning period for each of these systems.
All right, thank you.
So Councilman Moody, Councilman Barnes, and then Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I've al- also received a couple of calls on, uh, uh, the Portsmouth Boulevard in Douglas Park, whi- which is on, on Grand Street. It, it, it's really a, a distance from Portsmouth Boulevard, and, uh, people are complaining that that shouldn't, the, the traffic, uh, trailer should be in the, in the neighborhood closer to the school, uh, not on Portsmouth Boulevard that's snagging, uh, people that, uh, uh, don't, don't have to deal with children or crossing guards there.
Well, the Douglas Park, uh, has not been snagging anyone, because the flashes are not active there.
They, I'm sorry, they have a...
They're not active. Portsmouth Boulevard, that those, the flashers eastbound and westbound are not currently working. Uh, the westbound flashers needed to have an entire base put in, and that has been done. Uh, the estimated, and I know this is a little off of what you're asking, you're asking to move, but, uh, those flashers are slated to be completed in February, end of February.
Well, well, I think the concern is, 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 a lot of people think it's good that they're not active, uh, on, on the Portsmouth Boulevard traffic, but people are saying they should be closer in, uh, on Grand Street, not Portsmouth Boulevard.
I'll have to, are there existing signs on Grand right at this moment? I can check and see. Uh, if they're there, if there are flashers there, then that's certainly something we can do.
Yeah.
If there are not, that, that's a heavier lift, that I'll have to get with traffic engineering to get them to go ahead and, and either repair or install those.
And I've also had requests for, uh, the speed detection on Greenwood, uh, near Victory Elementary, that, uh, kids have to, uh, due to, uh, the cars and the sidewalk, somehow they have to walk out, uh, in the street for a portion, uh, of the distance. And they say, uh, traffic is actually exceeding the twenty-five mile an hour posted speed limit that's there now. So...
As I recall, in our speed study, we didn't have many violators. Uh, that may just be because of the time that we did it. Uh, we certainly can revisit it. There's nothing preventing us from expanding into other school zones. Uh, not like the red light, where we're limited by population. So I can absolutely revisit that and see about expanding into Greenwood.
Thanks.
Councilman Barnes?
I, I previously had a question based off of what, um, Councilman Hugo said, but I understand what he was saying now, so I don't have any question anymore.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke?
Yes, my questions were along the line with Councilman Moody. Um, I guess how did you determine which school zones to pick? Because someone asked me about Manor High School right there at Elmhurst, and of course Hodges Manor on Hodges Ferry, um, why those locations weren't included.
So we, we, that Manor was included. Um, we included several school zones, and the ones that... I don't wanna make the appearance that any one school zone is more important than the other.
Right.
Um, but with the scope of work, to actually get this project running, we narrowed it down. Again, there's nothing preventing us from doing more. Um, some, some locations need more apparent work than others. Um, and, like on Cherokee, I, I believe signage is missing entirely in the other direction. So we need to get, again, power is a big issue. So nothing's preventing us from going ahead and, and adding school zones. And I, I absolutely, we, we can take another look at that, and again, I can talk with traffic engineering to expand our city signage in order to make them viable for, for this type of enforcement.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Well, if I may, um, Sergeant Blankenship, I wanna thank you and the department. I think this is a great program, and anything we can do to keep us, our children safe is, I think we, I think, uh, we can all agree is very important. So, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Interim City Manager, do you have any other items?
No, sir, that concludes my presentations. Um, but I was gonna go to the CMR summary.
That is fine, ma'am.
CMR twenty-four dash zero eight, uh, is for supplements for the Sheriff's Department. Uh, twenty-four dash zero nine, two point eight four million is an adoption of ordinance for, um, community-based strategies. Grant twenty-four dash ten, information technology. This is an, um, adoption, a request and adoption of ordinance for, uh, city cable franchise agreement. Twenty-four dash eleven is for information technology. Um, this is a request for setting rates in terms of a short-term dark fiber lease. Twenty-four dash twelve, a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars is for planning, adoption, uh, a request for an adoption accepting community development block grant. Twenty-four dash thirteen, six hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four. Adoption for the drug, Portsmouth Drug Prosecutor Grant. Twenty-four dash fourteen, seventy thousand oh eight five for Behavioral Health Services for a grant, Virginia Department of Health. Twenty-four dash fifteen, ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for BHS. Adoption, requesting adoption for, uh, STEP, Virginia Funding. Twenty-four dash sixteen, fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars for Behavioral Health Services. Uh, requesting, uh, adoption for a grant for training, travel, and outreach services. Twenty-four dash seventeen, thirty thousand dollars for fire. Requesting adoption of a hazardous material emergency response grant. Twenty-four dash eighteen for fire, adoption of a resolution for memorandum of understanding for Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach for, uh, aided dispatch project. That concludes my CMRs.
Thank you, ma'am. And we do have a need for a closed session at this time, so I would ask that Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, if you would please read the closed session motion.
I move to go into a closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection two point two dash thirty-seven-eleven-A eight for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed by the city regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding collective bargaining and Virginia International Gateway, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection two point two dash thirty-seven-eleven-A one for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidate for the position of city assessor.
I would ask, are we able to vote electronically, ma'am?
Can you try, and we'll see if it's working, if it's not working. Okay.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes, we're in closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, we, we, and my colleagues in council, we do have a need to come out of closed session. And Madam Vice Mayor, would you please read the closed session motion?
Yes, I will. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were heard, uh, were convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. We're out of closing, and we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we'll resume at seven twenty-nine, seven thirty.